It's 3:30 PM. If we can all stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we're out of the invocation.
Do you pray the prayer? Father God, we come and pause tonight to acknowledge that you are God, and that every good and perfect gift comes from you. Lord, we just pray tonight that you would just, even in this moment right now, just examine our hearts, our minds, and that they would be right with you. And, Lord, even as we make decisions tonight, I pray for wisdom for this body. Lord, I just pray for your blessing, not over just this time, but your blessing over our community. Lord, I pray your blessing over our families. Would you be restoration where there's healing, where it's needed? I pray your blessing over our businesses, Lord. Help our businesses prosper as they seek to do ethical and moral business practices, Lord. I just pray your blessing would be over our fire, police, and all our public workers, Lord, give them safety and blessing in their families as well. Lord Jesus, we recognize that, Lord, that all blessing comes from you. And, Lord, we want to acknowledge you in every part of our lives and ask, Lord, that you would just be present in this meeting. Lord, thank you for the liberties that we have. We ask for your blessing to be over our schools or our children. Lord, we're looking for the day where peace can be the norm in our schools, and that what we've seen most recently. So, Lord, would you just give wisdom to legislators as well as community members, Lord, that we might see how we might be a part of the solution to bring about the peace and the healing that we want to be known for in our schools? So, just ask your blessing over our teachers and watch over our children, Lord. Pray your blessing over our churches, Lord, that your presence would just infiltrate our community. So, Lord, we just thank you for this night, and thank you for the liberties and freedoms that we have in this country, and we ask your blessing and guidance over the rest of these proceedings. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I'd like to do a roll call. Trustee Blue? Trustee Gray? Trustee Holston? Trustee Horn? Trustee Raisik? And Trustee Vincent? Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to point a mayor pro temp.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Last one, make the motion to my name, Trustee Gray.
Okay, and one second. Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
The agenda is only for open to the public. We have no takers, so we'll move on to Section E, Set agenda, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Roll call, please. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Moving to Item F, Clerk's Report.
No report today.
Thank you. Item G, Mayor's Report, Mr. Pat did not discuss anything with me, Administrator or Attorney, anything?
Yes.
Okay. Moving to Section H, Administrator's Report.
Thank you, sir. I have several items under my agenda, first being Item H1 is a TIF reimbursement request for Dollar General. And up for your consideration is a TIF number four payout request from Dollar General in the amount of $322,970 and zero cent. And that is as a reimbursement for construction of Town Center Way and other infrastructure improvements. All the infrastructure has been approved and accepted by the village. All TIF eligible expenses have been validated by TESSC Associates and includes their recommendation for payment as well. So, the action requested is a motion to authorize TIF reimbursement to Dollar General in the amount of $322,970 and zero cent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item H2, under my agenda, is a DPW Industrial Drive Roof Bid. This board authorized the authorization to go out to bid for the roof replacement at the DPW building located on Industrial Drive. The professional services of Linden Group were utilized to place this project out for bid, through a total of 12 bids received. Excuse me, the lowest bid received for a 25-year manufacturer's warranty on the PVC roof was in the amount of $154,694 and zero cent, and that was submitted by Metal Master Roof Master Incorporated. With the inclusion of replacing the 10 existing skylights, the total amount of the contract would be $161,664 and zero cent. Linden Group has qualified the low bidder as being acceptable for the job. Therefore, our action requested this evening would be a motion to authorize the Administrator to enter into a contract with Metal Master Roof Master Incorporated in the amount of $161,664 and zero cent for the replacement of the DPW building located at 6025 Industrial
Motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just for the record, this is within the budget for this year. We had $250,000 set aside for DPW work this year. I don't think anything's been spent except for the engineering work that we just had finished and approved the last meeting, so this is within the budget.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Vincent? Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H3 on the agenda is more of a notification of the Teamsters Negotiation, the contract for the Department of Public Works, and the Clerical Union is up, ends in April 30th of this year. We have received notice from the Teamsters Local 700, representing those two units that desire to enter into negotiations. And in the past, the municipality has been represented by Labor Attorney Carolyn Crafttepper from Ansel Bling. And at this time, based on performance, excuse me, based on past performance of our labor attorney, I would seek authorization to once again use Carolyn Crafttepper of Ansel Bling to enter into these negotiations and see them through. So, our motion would be just simply a motion to allow that to happen.
Clear your motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Also included in your packet, Item Number H4, is a letter of engagement for professional services from Whipfley LLP, and that is for the fiscal year 2018 audit. The letter of engagement is in the amount of $38,000. However, I would like to note that the village was able, should the village be able to provide all necessary information to facilitate the audit prior to the start of the audit, Whipfley LLP has agreed to adjust the price down as much as $4,000 based on our preparation for that audit. This offer was achieved strictly as a result of due diligence on the part of Finance Director Darrell Bowner. The motion, our requested action, is a motion to authorize the Administrator to sign the engagement letter with Whipfley LLP in the amount not to exceed $38,000.
A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Just for the record, villages in the area that are doing the same thing are spending about $20,000 more than we are. So, this is very good job by Mr. Bowner in getting us a good rate here, and we have used these people before. So, we are very happy to be able to get this price.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Thank you. Last item on my agenda is Item H5, and that is a request from KenCo Inc., which is a new company located in the Village of Moni at 5800 Industrial Drive, requesting to place up to 15 temporary signs. However, they verbally indicated they doubted that they would use that many, but up to 15 temporary signs for up to five days. And once again, they've indicated they believe it will be accomplished in less time than five days. And the purpose of those signs are to advertise an onsite job fair with the intent to hire new employees for their operations. KenCo will be responsible for placing those signs on private property and also retrieving said signs once the function is over. Our action requested this evening is a motion to authorize KenCo placement of those signs on private property for the purpose of hiring employees for the new facility.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Question?
I have a discussion too, so.
You threw me off when you said private property. Obviously, they would get the private property owners permission to do that?
They would. There would be a requirement of that, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Just a comment I noticed in the announcement that went on this, that the starting rate of this is a nice starting rate compared to some of the other jobs in the area, so this should be a nice addition, giving some good opportunities to people in our area. Starting rate is $16.50 an hour, and they have higher than that, but their lowest rate is $16.50 an hour.
In your discussion, did they kind of give a ballpark where they're going to put the signs, as far as throughout the town or just around 50 where the Old World Kitchen was?
They would like the indication was they would like the high-traffic areas and certainly directional signage leading to their facility.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Thank you. And to wrap up my report, I would just like to comment that at the January 24th Board Meeting, you may recall that Clerk Kojo had suggested, brought up some suggestions for changes to the transient merchant ordinance. And during that time, she had made some suggestions, and we would like to move that forward officially and ask that there is a motion to direct the Administrator to work with the attorney in drafting a potential amendment to that ordinance, the existing ordinance, as well as should there be any input from any of the trustees? We would like to hear that prior to bringing that back before this board.
Refresh my memory, what is specifically that we're looking for here?
I believe some of the high points were the transient license permit not to be for a full year at a time, that we could be reduced to a shorter period of time, such as maybe a daily permit, so you can, the potential client could pick the number of days, maybe a monthly permit, just things of that nature, as well as in probably some of the most important parts where the ability to provide some sort of background check and a form of ID so that our residents would understand these merchants, itinerant merchants have been vetted through the municipality. But that's the second half of my request, is that if there are other suggestions, such as timeframes or so forth, that the trustees have that opportunity and make those suggestions to us.
If I remember right, though, there was also some discussion about turning this over to the Police Department?
They would certainly participate in some of those functions as far as the level of background that could be done, when and how that could be accommodated, so there's some coordination to be done with the Police Department.
We're adding quite a bit. We're asking the Police Department to do background checks every time somebody wants a transient permit?
Possibly. That's some of the things that are up for discussion yet with the chief, but, you know, based on the number of transient permits that we have, I'm going to say year-to-date, you know, at least at this point, we don't have an overload of those.
So, if summertime and somebody wants to come in and spend a couple of days in Moni, they're going to go down to somebody, either the Clerk's Office or the Police Department, ask for a permit, get a background check, and then start that same day?
I don't know that it would be the same day. There would be some lead time that would have to be involved there, but those types of things are some of the conversations that would be had between Administration and the Police Chief.
Will you ask for some feedback, so?
I'm taking it.
Give it to you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that I think this is really important. I think it's important we give it out there into, so that the public knows we're taking this very seriously. Just today, I had three people knock on my door, none of them had any kind of ID, they were traveling in vans that weren't identified at all. I know one was, did call the police, some, they called the Police Department, and we always encourage residents, if in doubt, you know, call the police, because they were very uncomfortable with people knocking at their door and with no idea at all. So, I think this is really important. I'd love to see, even just bullet points on what was originally requested, so that we can give you some, you know, good feedback on that and give you some ideas as to know that as well.
Be happy to provide a copy of the current ordinance. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just want to piggyback on that, Trustee Blue, I believe that the Police Department were on that this morning, because there was, again, it was over in the Highlands, they were bouncing around, some carpet cleaner, supposed people, and that was kind of nipped in the bud. So, Chief, thank you for that. Anything else?
So, I'm just curious, how many, and you said year-to-date, we haven't gotten that many, at least in winter. So, do we know how many we get usually in the summer months of requests for those?
I'm going to say we can find that out. I do not have that information, but I'll leave it there.
I'm going to say I had somebody come by my house at least once a week last summer.
Sounds about right. And that's a nuisance for a lot of people.
So, in any my request, if we could get the, a motion to have Administration work with the attorney for some potential amendments to bring back before this board, that is our request.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Larry, is this something normally that we would need a motion for?
I think they just wanted on the record for authorization for myself to work with Dave on the ordinance, but we've done it before in the past, at least for the permission to work with Dave.
Is there a particular committee that could be doing this, when we have six committees? Finance, no.
Police Committee, I believe. Public, I'm sorry.
Public, economic development.
Oh, economic development, that sounds like a good one. I just, I mean, rather than, this has to go back to the trustees anyway, to my way of thinking, if we're going to work on something like this, I'll go through one of the committees that we have already standing. So, I recommend instead of doing it directly with the Administration and the Village Attorney and all that high-priced dollars we have with the Village Attorney, we let the Economic Development Committee work on it first.
Well, Trustee Holston, I'm sure that Trustee Raisik will do a sterling job as the police and safety trustee, but I'm more than happy to serve our community in that capacity as well.
I would actually like to get the village Administrator and the attorney, because I think that we are looking at springtime and summer, and I don't know if the committee's going, they won't need enough, and then have to bring it back to the attorney. So, if time is of the essence, I would think that maybe we should let the Administrator and the attorney do it.
Anyone else? So, we, there is a motion on the floor?
Who needs motion? Who's second?
Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
No.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, officials report. Public Works, we are going to have a committee meeting next Tuesday, which is the 6th, at 6:00 PM, to discuss the village vehicles, which I believe that Darrell and DJ and myself were, I know I talked to DJ, Darrell go over the budget for the 2019, because unfortunately, little delays of last year, but we wanted to get ahead of the game. So, next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM, committee meeting, and I will contact Trustee Raisik End of report. Parks and Rec?
I just have a few things. We have a contest, jaw face on a leprechaun. Forms are out in the hallway, so you can put on your best face, and that's due back to Parks and Rec on March 16. And then also, how many jelly beans are in the jar? That's, the jar is out in the hallway. That has to be returned in by April 4th, all your guesses. And then the team forum that was scheduled, and was scheduled for January and the weather was bad, we are going to reschedule that and have it on April 13th at the Park Building. And more details will follow on that. End of report.
Finances?
Couple of things. Finance Committee met this past Monday to continue to review the budget. We'll continue to meet before, the Monday before each Board Meeting, and we'll meet again in two weeks at 4:00. The meeting went very well. We got through the first pass of the budget, and we'll start going through in more detail at the next meeting. All trustees are invited, as well as the public, to that meeting. General information on general fund revenues through January, fuel revenues were 61% of the budget numbers, less than last year at this time, however. The 1% sales tax revenue was down compared to budgeted amounts, but slightly higher than last year at this time. And home rule sale revenues were down compared to budget as well as compared to this time last year. General fund expenses were 63% of budget after 75% of the year has been completed. And update on the Asavar, that's the company that does our auditing that we agreed to use last year. They have really not come up with a lot. They have submitted 255 preliminary address exceptions to us for cable revenue. They're still analyzing the telecommunications revenue. Sales tax revenue, they've only found one address that was to be corrected in Department of Revenue, and that business has closed, so there's no funds recovery for that. They saved us $177 on the gas payable audit, and the analysis is still in process on electrical payable audit and telecommunications payable audit, excuse me, there were no findings. So, we haven't collected a lot, but that's really good news, because we don't pay them unless they collect. And we haven't collected a lot, because apparently we're doing a pretty good job, and they haven't found anything. So, to me, that's good news. End of report.
Economic Development?
Well, I know every week or every meeting, I was saying that the economic development team are working really hard, and I know for sure that they are, but today, we can actually announce some information, more information on KenCo. I think it was announced on, certainly on Facebook, I saw that they'd taken, they'd said yes and no, moving into the village, but I wanted to give a little bit of background on that, because it's not just a decision that was made and they're going to move in. This company has been known to us, subject to our Economic Development Director for several years, probably since sometime in 2015, and as a group, we've had meetings on-site and stayed in touch with that facility. It's been vacant since 2013. Since then, they've done some exterior improvement projects in terms of painting and parking lot, and all of that was completed in 2016. Along the way, Exeter, the owner, they worked aggressively to lease the facility, and though there were a number of failed proposals, they did not, it wasn't that there if it's wanting to win because of all the work they've done to bring the property up to where it was then. In May of 2017, activity picked up, and Exeter pursued another tenant, and over the course of 2017, Kevin Daly, our Economic Development Director, and I'm sure other members of the team here, attended separate site visits. Chief Neeland was also included in that, a fine chief. He made himself available, provided valuable guidance on matters of fire suppression. His expertise was critical due to the nature of the product that they'll be, or one of the products they'll be storing in the warehouse. And then this all culminated on February 20th, when the village finally received a business license application from KenCo Logistics Services. So, I wanted to give you some background, because I know people keep saying, when are we going to do this, when are we going to do that? Well, there's lots of things happening over a period of months and years, and this is a really great example of the tenacity of our team, our Economic Development Director, our Administration, and the team, just to keep going, you know, to keep going, to keep making those visits, to keep talking to people. And I know that this is happening at many other, on many other parallels within the village Administration, so I'm really excited that Kevin finally let me tell somebody about it, because I know he's been working really hard. This company is a third-party logistics firm. It's got many warehouses across the country, holding a variety of products. The Moni facility will house packaged oil and lubricants by ExxonMobil, and they are looking, as Trustee Holston said, they are looking to hire over 30 full-time workers, and their hourly wages will be starting at $16.75. So, we're very, very excited about that. Thank you to Kevin Daly, our Economic Director, and Mr. Wallace, our Administrator, and the team. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Jane, do you have the dates that they are going to do the interviews?
I do not, but I'm hoping.
I got it.
Yeah, I'm hoping that we'll get that information and we'll be able to share it.
March 13th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and also from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, and also on March 14th, the same times, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And again, it is on our website. Again, this came out of late Tuesday, yeah.
It's on Facebook, thank you.
Yes, it's somewhere in the social media world. Yes, it's somewhere in that social media world, which is so wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, thank you.
Building Services? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just a few items for us, for you, for the village board. That property that Janet cited is 5800 West Industrial Drive, and our building services team has done a preliminary walkthrough of that and at least given them temporary occupancy to hold their interviews and so forth over there. And then also, they are working on revising our code book. We are adopting the 2015 IBC codes and the 2014 NEC codes, and those will be reviewed by council, and then they will, I'm not sure if they need to go through to this board, do they, to be adopted? Okay. And they will be reviewed by this board and voted on accordingly. That is the end of my report.
Thank you. Public Safety, anything, Chief, tonight?
Just a note, the first nice weekend that we had this spring, the Carver Bush came out of hibernation and hit several communities throughout the south suburbs. Hit a half dozen cars one night in Highland subdivision. In ninety-nine percent of the cases, I know this is going to be shocking, but the cars were unlocked. We have not had any problems since then, but just so the community's aware, they're not going away.
Thank you. Moving on to Attorney's Report.
No report yet.
Any old business?
Not to put us off in the going, but where are we on the webpage?
We have received proposals from three separate companies. We're in the process of vetting those. I will be meeting as a group with our department heads to move that along. We hope to have a proposal for, brought forward to this board by the next meeting. That is our goal. That's the best I can give you at this point.
All right, so we are not posting our village board meeting agenda on the webpage because it's not available.
That is correct.
And we are not posting it to the newspaper because there's not enough time. So all we're doing is posting it on the board outside?
Correct. However, we, I am working with in-house IT so that we could put up a link on our splash page. It's at our website address, and if we can get that up there, that link, each time there's a board meeting, we would be able to upload the board packet to that link. We just couldn't get that done in time for this.
Larry, do we have a problem with that?
No, sir. It's available, it should be on the website, but it's not available. I don't think there's any issue. As long as it's posted outside, I think we're fine. But once the website becomes up and available, yeah.
We don't have to notify the press?
No, sir. If it's a special meeting, that's one thing, but it's a regular board meeting, no.
Logistically speaking, when we reschedule a meeting like we did tonight?
It should be obviously posted, and I don't know what the newspaper asked for with respect to special meetings, propose to notify. A meeting like this, a regular board meeting, I think we're fine because it was at the last board meeting we made that public notice, so I think we're okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? New business?
Yes. As you know, last summer, we made a decision, approved a review committee to be formed to review the crime-free rental ordinance. And that committee was comprised, Trustee Horn, Chief Kerner, Mike Johnson, although we've mentioned myself. We met first in August and since then had five public meetings. We did agree at the last public meeting to unanimous, we recommend repealing the current crime-free ordinance and replacing it with the residential rental licensing ordinance. The committees worked very hard to produce an ordinance that will provide a unique opportunity for the municipality, the landlords and the tenants to work together to improve the quality of all rental housing properties and enabling the municipality to proactively reduce the number of code violations, nuisance complaints, and police calls. It is also implementable. The building department has registration paperwork and processes in place, along with our first-ever rental housing database comprising of all known residential rental properties in the village of Monee. It's enforceable, the building department and the police department to work together to create processes to identify and track code violations, nuisance complaints, and police calls. Further, we've shared the draft ordinance and met with members of the public. Anybody who raised a question, we invited them in, and I'm very proud to say that when I put that out to the review committee and asked any of the review committee to come and meet with the public, every one of them did. That was awesome, as well as members of the team here in the village. So they came in, raised questions, we answered those questions, and we also met with representatives from American Homes who own about fifty properties in the village company. We shared this draft ordinance with our board in December 2017, and I shared it again on Monday this week with the board. And today, I'm asking if anybody has any questions on the ordinance, the draft ordinance, before I ask for a motion to send it to our legal counsel for review and preparation as an ordinance.
I wrote the original bill that she's asking to repeal, and I think that the committee has done a very good job of putting this together. I've reviewed it. I had some questions that Trustee Blue and I reviewed tonight before the meeting that she'll take to the attorney, but I think that it's, they've done a very nice job. I think it's something that will be an advantage to the landowners as well as to the tenants. I have reviewed it, placed a call this afternoon to the landowner or the business owner who initially had some concerns, and they're very happy with the response they've had. They're very happy with this building, it's been supported. So I would make the motion that we go ahead and pass this on to the attorney to do final review on.
We have a second. I'll make the second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik? Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Anything else on our new business? Okay. Moving to open the public, the man agenda. Only, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Paul Telly, 266.
Mr. Telly, I'm sorry, could I get you to push the button there to green light, come on?
Green light's on.
There you go.
Okay. Paul Telly, 266, Forest House, South Bay. I just wanted to just say that I wanted to thank Trustee Horn for responding to my email. The email was regarding the truck stop that is proposed on the corner of Monee Manhattan originally. And quite frankly, I was kind of disappointed that he was the only one that replied to my email. I know Trustee Holston told, I didn't see his email, I didn't see my emails today, but some email today regarding it, wanted to discuss it, but unfortunately, I didn't see it. But like, I did write the, or did send an email two weeks ago, and I just wanted to thank Trustee Horn for responding and getting back with me. And this whole truck stop, it's just, if I'm the only one that opposes it then in this town, then, you know, obviously, go ahead with it. I mean, this is one person, but if nobody else knows about it, then there, you know, there could be no other responses and, you know, everybody doesn't get to bedette. I'm sure it wasn't in the bedette. And the website being down, that kind of, there's no way of anybody knowing that this proposal for a truck stop, so. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, for the record, visited with Paul a few minutes before the meeting tonight, and I do apologize that I didn't get ahold of him sooner, but I had a little email issue myself. But offered to get with him at a date to be determined by him and his wife, I believe. He said he wanted to get involved with Mr. Wallace. So we'll follow up. I'm waiting for him to tell, give me a date, and we'll try to get with him to discuss the items. I did talk with Trustee Horn last week, so I knew he had responded. I didn't want a bunch of us calling him at one time. I felt might be necessary to sit down and go through this a little bit in a timely matter. So we will do that hopefully before the next meeting. And then, again, from the point of view of if there's anybody else's objects, I don't know. There's hardly anything we do in the village that subway doesn't drift to. So I would expect there will be pros and cons. But again, I appreciate him responding, I appreciate his interest, and we'll do our best to follow up with him to go through the specifics of what he asked privately with him and his wife as soon as is possible, and then where appropriate, address it publicly.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, I'd just like to, Mr. Telly, I just wanted to let you know that this is, they were before the board because there was, we had reached a stumbling block. You will hear more about this as it moves forward. It has not been an approved project. It's not been followed the protocols with site plan and design and all, so you will have plenty of opportunities. I just wanted to assure you that moving forward, there will be much more information forthcoming and probably discussion at this level, so just for you. You bet.
Anyone else from the public? I'll look to make a motion for German. Second, I'll second that. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Oh, yeah.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.